Good evening. This twelfth meeting, twelfth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term. Good evening. This twelfth meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Minister Terry "Uncle T" Williams of Challenge to Change. Uncle T, take it away. It's good to see you.
Good evening, everyone.
Everyone. I just want to say that I am truly thankful and honored, and it's a privilege to stand before such amazing group of leaders in our city at such a time as this. So I'm truly honored to come before y'all, to lead y'all before the throne of God. So Father God, we just want to thank you and magnify your holy name in all the earth. For you are God and God alone, and there is none like unto you. We look unto you for guidance, for you tell us in your word that lean not towards our understanding, but in our ways acknowledge you, and you would direct our path. For we are fallible, and you are infallible. So we will always look unto the hills from which comes our help. Whenever there is a crisis, oh Father God, we must look to you, because you are the orchestrator and the director of all things. So we seek your guidance and your truth. So guide us. We thank you for such a body of great people that are experiencing historical changes in our city. We do not take it lightly, and I never want anyone in here to take it lightly. Oh Father God, in the last two years, you have made drastic changes in our city. The murderer, the non-fatals, you, it was your work, but you have done it through man. So we ask that you continue to use our vessels as a condor of truth, that we may continue to do your will on earth. For you are our Father, and we will be about our Father's business. We thank you for every leader. We thank you for the mayor, the governor, and all those that stand before us now. That I am proud, oh Father God, that to see that when crises happen, I can see faces in this room clear as day, standing stern and firm, guiding your people. So as you guide your people, give them strength, wisdom, strategies, that they may continue to lead this city into all truth. We thank you, we magnify your holy name in all the earth, and we ask that the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be holy and acceptable in your sight. For truly you are our Lord, our strength, and our redeemer. As in Jesus' massless name that I do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Uncle T. And just for those that don't know this man's work, it is worth coming down to East Baltimore and seeing what you do. Uh, when I started doing work around trauma-informed care, Challenge to Change was one of the first organizations I visited, and spoke to Uncle T, and spoke about his journey and the path that brought him to where he was, and just watched young guys that he was mentoring that otherwise who knows where they would have been, but that would come to this row house in East Baltimore just to be supported and loved and cared for by this man right here. And so I appreciate you. I know Councilman Glover, who's been supporting your work, we appreciate you. Um, thank you for all that you're doing for particularly young men, but just young people in our city. Please continue to do that work in partnership with this city council. We appreciate it. Please give it up for Uncle T for the good work he does. With that, uh, welcome back, Marine. We will now hear our, we will now observe the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Blanchard. Councilman?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you for your recent service. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cor- Cohen.
Here. And please note Councilmember Porter and Middleton as its huge absences. Thank you. Did you say we have a quorum?
Yes, Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journals for the June sixteenth and June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes.
Without objection, the journals will be adopted. Hearing none, the journals are adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. We'll now turn to executive nominations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero three four Stephen W. Fogelman, member, Board of Ethics.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero three five Dr. Melanie Bryant, Director, Office of LGBTQ Affairs.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero three six Kendall Abu Hakim, Bureau Head, Department of Public Works, Division of Solid Waste.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero three seven Stephen Sharkey, Bureau Head, Department of Public Works, Division of Water and Wastewater.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero three eight Matthew Garbark, Director, Department of Public Works.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. That concludes executive nominations. Now we move on to bills being introduced. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight zero In rem foreclosure vacant structures and nuisance properties. For the purpose of authorizing certain property located in Baltimore City, identified as vacant structure or nuisance property under the Baltimore City Building Code, to be subject to a certain in rem foreclosure process, requiring certain procedures for an in rem foreclosure, requiring the city to take certain actions to compensate the interested parties in property that is acquired through an in rem foreclosure, specifying the circumstances under which an in rem foreclosure judgment may be reopened, making conforming changes, defining certain terms, and generally relating to in rem foreclosure of vacant property in Baltimore City. Lead sponsor Ramos, cosponsors Parker, Conway, Gray, Bullock, Jones, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Ramos.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, and thank you, colleagues. According to the DHCD dashboard, at this moment, there are twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-six vacant and abandoned properties in Baltimore City, which are those marked with a vacant building notice on code map, the red squares. Uh, there's also approximately twenty thousand vacant lots, which are not on the dashboard yet. There has been amazing progress. To the tune of rehabbing or demolishing a little under a thousand vacant properties a year in the last three years, and yet we still have a long way to go. Baltimore City government only owns nine hundred and fourteen of these vacant properties and about a half of the vacant lots. Because the city only owns seven percent of these vacant properties, we need more tools to make sure that we can acquire them, work with our communities on the outcomes, and make them available to our partners that will, uh, get them back to productive use. The reduction in vacant properties is lar- currently is largely due to the private market, either families selling their family vacant homes to wholesalers, investors obtaining vacant and abandoned properties via tax sale, and other reasons. This means communities may not be able to have input on what happens with the vacant homes. In addition, we have already seen at least two major scams involving Baltimore City vacant properties because of private investors. I'm going to give you a little history of in rem, excuse me, for a second. Um, in twenty fifteen, as part of their commissioned study about solutions to Baltimore City's tax sale system, the Center for Community Progress recommended the use of in rem judicial in rem foreclosure rather than tax sale to take hold of vacant properties. In twenty nineteen, we took that recommendation, went to the General Assembly, passed legislation that created and authorized jurisdictions like Baltimore City to conduct judicial in rem foreclosure actions. Uh, in rem means against a thing rather than a person, just, um, as the legal definition. In this iteration, uh, this initial iteration, I'm going to call in rem one. And the city can foreclose on vacant and abandoned property or lot when the unpaid liens exceed the assessed value of a vacant property or lot, meaning that the vacant property or lot has no value. The liens are then extinguished, producing clear title for the city to acquire. I'm proud to have worked with a broad coalition to get this passed in my previous role as the Executive Director for the Community Development Network of Maryland and prior to becoming, my becoming a councilperson. Shortly after the passage in the General Assembly, the Baltimore City Council passed DHCD's bill to begin conducting in rem actions here in Baltimore City. In rem one is extremely important, because we know there are several thousand vacant properties and lots with hundreds and thousands of dollars of unpaid liens. No one was purchasing these in tax sale. No one would approach owners to purchase them, because the liens were so high. They were stuck as vacant forever. Owned by mostly deceased people, families who've moved away, forfeited LLCs, absentee landlords, foreclosed properties, and the like. This was the case of the Stricker Street property where Lieutenant Buttram, Lieutenant Sadler, and firefighter EMT Lakayo were killed. In rem one is the best tool, in rem is the best tool we have to address these kinds of properties. As a matter of fact, using lien data from last year, forty-four percent of the privately owned vacant properties and lots in my district are eligible for in rem one. In addition, once the city acquires the property through in rem, we, the city, can control the outcome. It does not have to be auctioned to the highest bidder. For whole block outcomes, this is critical. While implementation of in rem one was hampered because of the pandemic, filing of in rem one cases began in earnest in early twenty-twenty-two, and the first cases landed in Circuit Court in November of twenty-two. I want to thank the Circuit Court for their very important role here, because our in rem cases are in a separate docket, uh, with one dedicated magistrate. Circuit Court is one of the greatest partners we have in this initiative. In rem is designed to be faster. Other forms of acquisition of vacant properties or lots take years. In rem takes months. In rem cases, from filing the case to judgment, take a hun- ninety to a hundred and eighty days, which is meteoric speed uh, to all the other acquisitions, uh, method of acquisition. Uh, in the two point five years of implementation, the city has acquired over four hundred and thirteen vacant properties and lots, with several in my district, particularly for the whole block strategy around the sixteen hundred block of Gorsuch, which was our test block for in rem. Thanks to Mayor Scott and all of you, um, over the past two budgets, we've added several more lawyers to the in rem team. Thanks also to Chair Klippinger and Senate President Ferguson and the entire General Assembly. With a match by this administration and us in this budget, we have provided significant funds for the Circuit Court to hear more cases. Currently, in rem cases are heard every Wednesday morning, and the additional funding will allow for either more time each Wednesday or to establish an additional day for cases on this dedicated docket. DHCD is now using in rem as the primary mode of acquisition, which is exactly how we envisioned it. The goal is to file two hundred cases a month. We are currently around forty to sixty cases a month. And I want to thank DHCD for their very good work and dedication in implementing in rem. So today, the bill I bring before you, I call in rem two. It is the next version of our work in this, uh, space. It expands in rem to allow the city to foreclose when the unpaid liens are below the assessed value of a vacant property or lot, and the liens are in arrears for more than six months. The city would still have to pay the difference between the appraised value and the liens to the last known owner to avoid, uh, a taking or violation of the recent Tyler versus Hennepin decision. The state authorization for this phase of the work came in twenty-twenty-three, thanks to Senator McCray and Delegate Smith, who sponsored the administration's bill allowing us to do this. Uh, and we have to pass this bill before you in order for us to continue this work and to, um, give authorization for DHCD to move in this direction. Currently, twenty-eight percent of the privately owned vacant properties and lots in my district qualify for in rem two actions. These same properties would likely go to receivership. But in receivership, we have to auction the property off to the highest bidder, which is actually, does not allow for community development organizations to bid, because these bids are too high. Uh, or, uh, the person who gets that property may not have the best interest with the community in mind. In rem two is faster. It will be better. And we will be able to truly accomplish both, uh, whole block outcomes using both in rem one and in rem two. Based on the analysis conducted by my office, we believe with the full complement of in rem tools, the city could acquire sixty-five percent or more of the privately owned vacant and abandoned properties and lots in our city to ensure they get to the hands of partners who will get the job done. In my letters to the Baltimore Vacants Reinvestment Council each month, because I'm not on it, and I can't speak, so I'm just going to write letters. So I have eight letters, nine coming. I write extensively about, uh, in rem one and the impact it has. I very much look forward to writing about in rem two. Uh, and I want to acknowledge some of the challenges we still have in getting properties to the hands of people, um, that we know will do the work. But the bottom line is that we need more tools, not less, to tackle this crisis, and I'm extremely grateful to have the opportunity to work on this. Thanks to my colleagues who have signed on. I look forward to the hearing. We'll, I'll have charts to explain this a little bit better. Um, and I continue to look forward to the discussion. And thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos, for your leadership on this topic. I see Councilman Torrance for, uh, cosponsor. Blanchard, Councilmember Blanchard as well. Uh, right. This bill has been assigned to the Housing and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight one zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling to three dwelling units in the R seven zoning district, sixty-nine oh one Reisterstown Road. For the purpose of permitting certain, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R seven zoning district on the property known as sixty-nine oh one Reisterstown Road, block four twenty-one eight D, lot zero zero one, as outlined and read on the accompanying plot, and for a special effective date. Lead sponsor Schleifer.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight two Planned Unit Development Amendment Under Armour Headquarters, for the purpose of approving certain amendments to the Under Armour Headquarters Planned Unit Development and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsors Blanchard.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight three RPP Area Thirty, exception fifteen East West Street. For the purpose of amending the Parking Management Plan reinstatement for the RPP Area Thirty, South Baltimore East, to add an exception to the planned general permit allotments for dwelling units. Lead sponsors Blanchard.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight four City Streets Closing A Six-Foot Portion Of West Saratoga Street And An Alley Ten Point Six Seven Feet Wide Bounded By Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, And North Green Street. For the purpose of condemning and closing a six-foot portion of West Saratoga Street And An Alley Ten Point Six Seven Feet Wide Bounded By Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, And North Green Street, As Shown On A Plot Number Three Zero Seven A, Two Three A, Prepared By The Survey Section And Filed In The Office Of The Department Of Transportation And Providing For A Special Effective Date. Lead sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight five Sale Of Property Section Of West Saratoga Street Bounded By Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, And North Green Street. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell, either at public or private sale, all its interests in certain property no longer needed for public use, known as the former bed of a six-foot portion of West Saratoga Street Bounded By Pearl Street, West Saratoga, And North Green Street, And Providing For A Special Effective Date. Lead sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight six City Streets Closing A Portion Of North Chapel Street. For the purpose of condemning and closing a portion of North Chapel Street, Extending Northerly Three Hundred And Five Point Two Feet Or More Or Less From The Side Of, North Side Of North Jefferson Street Bounded By McEldry Street, North Washington Street, Jefferson Street, And North Wolf Street As Shown On A Plot Number Three Oh Nine A, Thirty Eight, Prepared By The Survey Section And Filed In The Office Of The Department Of Transportation And Providing For A Special Effective Date. Lead sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We will now move on to resolutions of the city council. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero zero two nine R, Request For Federal And State Action Protect Social Security Offices, Medicare, And Medicaid. For the purpose of expressing the opposition of the city council To Closing And Cutting Staff At Local Social Security Administration Offices, Expressing The Opposition Of The City Council To Cutting Medicare, Medicaid, And Social Security Benefits, And Urging The Congress Of The United States To Protect The Public's Access To Social Security By Passing House HR eighteen seventy-six, The Keeping Our Field Offices Open Act, HR eighteen seventy-seven, The Protecting American Social Security Data Act, And HR seventeen hundred S seven seventy, The Social Security Expansion Act. Lead sponsor Jones. Cosponsors Parker, Conway, Gray, Bullock, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilman Jones, the floor is yours.
Uh, yes, I just want to, um, first say that, uh, the social security offices and, and, and and their employees have served our community and have served this country since nineteen thirty-five. And often they have been the, the, the best mechanism to help eliminate poverty. Um, and they, and, and in addition to that, twenty percent of all social security administrative staff are veterans. Um, and even more, older Americans in need of social security are, it's growing every day. And as many as eleven thousand Americans reach retirement, retirement age every day. Um, when it comes to our social security, social security is needed now more than ever. Uh, if you hear about what's going on in the administration, there's plans to cut social security, there's plans to cut Medicare, there's plans to cut Medicaid. I think we're at a time in our city where people rely on these services more than ever, and I think it's important for us as a council to send a statement and to urge, uh, not only the federal level, but also the state level to take action and protect those most vulnerable, to make sure we continue to provide those same securities to our residents that they've been used to. Um, we are in unprecedented times, we're in unusual times, but I think it's time for us to take unusual actions and measures and encourage folks to do as much as they can to protect the people we see every day in our district and throughout our city. That's the reason for this resolution, to bring the heightened sense of urgency that needs to happen. Um, not once people start calling our office, but beforehand, and to be proactive um, in the time that they need us to speak out for them the most. So I will urge my colleagues to support this resolution. And, uh, if so, I would, uh, if it's okay with you, Council President, um, make a motion to suspend the regular rules for immediate adoption.
So you seek to suspend rules three dash seven to move for immediate adoption?
Yes.
Okay. Without objection, rules three dash seven will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Got to move the resolution.
Make a motion to move the resolution.
The clerk will call the roll. Can you turn her mic back on?
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Blanchard. Jones.
Aye.
Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Yes. Motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. Thank you, Councilmen, for standing up for folks impacted, both from a jobs perspective and from a, people invest their entire life into a system. It should work for them at the end of their life. So thank you for your leadership on this issue. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the desk documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We now move on to bills on second reader. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dorsey.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules to reach short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Without objection, we will proceed with reading short titles. Hearing and seeing none, we will proceed with reading short titles. First, we'll hear bills on second reader from the Labor and Workforce Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four three Employees Retirement System Class C Filing Period Amendment.
Chair recognizes Chair Jones.
This bill was heard on July.
You have to stand.
This bill was heard on July ninth, uh, it was recommended as favorable. Uh, at this time, there's, uh, well, at this time, there's committee amendments on our colleagues' desks, and I recommend it's favorable.
So Chairman, you are moving the amendments for adoption?
Yes, for adoption.
Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, those, uh, those for moving the amendments, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The amendments are adopted.
All right, and also, Mr. President, at this time, I would like to invoke City Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement.
Not yet, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Uh, you are going, I think you are going to move the bill favorably as amended.
Oh, yeah, this, yeah, yeah, I moved the bill favorably as amended. Sorry.
Sorry. Is there any debate or discussion on this bill and its amendments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
And there we go. Now, Mr. President, I would, at this time, like to invoke City Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement from second reader to third reader.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCra- McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Blanchard. Jones.
Aye.
Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye, this bill moves to third reader today. Next, we'll hear bills on second reader from the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero two zero Zoning Conditional Use Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling Unit To Three Dwelling Units In The R eight Zoning District, Variance is two thousand and one West Baltimore Street.
The chair recognizes Chairman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee heard Council Bill twenty-five zero zero two zero, um, on July twenty-first, uh, sorry, uh, June twenty-second, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-sixth, man, I'm really having a hard time here, sorry. Um, there are findings of facts in the desk documents, uh, distributed. Uh, at this time, I move the findings of facts.
Is there any debate or discussion, uh, before the moving of finding of facts? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Finding of facts are adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the bill was recommended favorable by the committee. I move the bill favorable.
Any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero three seven Zoning Conditional Use Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling Unit To Three Dwelling Units In The R eight Zoning District, Variance is seventeen twenty-seven McCollum Street.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill also on June twenty-sixth. It was recommended favorable. I will note, this bill had an error in the title of the bill that we discussed, right? This is the one that was only a conversion to two units, but the title of the bill was deemed, uh, inconsequential. The text of the bill actually says two units, um, and everything is correct. Um, there are findings of facts, uh, in the desk documents that were distributed. At this time, I move the findings of facts.
Any debate or discussion on the finding of facts? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of moving the finding of fa- of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Finding of facts are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four one Zoning Conditional Use Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling Unit To Three Dwelling Units In The R seven Zoning District, Variance is twenty-six twenty-eight Edmiston Avenue.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Mr. President, this bill was also heard on June twenty-sixth, recommended favorable by the committee. There are finding of facts in the desk documents, I move the findings.
Any debate or discussion on the finding of facts? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of the, of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Finding of facts are approved.
Uh, I move the bill favorable.
Any debate, discussion, none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four nine Release Of Access Easement, Vehicular Access To U.S. Route Forty Through Sixty-seven Oh Nine Pulaski Highway.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Mr. President, this bill was also heard on June twenty-sixth, recommended favorable. At this time, I move the bill favorable.
Any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty five dash zero zero five three, rezoning, four thousand one, East Baltimore Street.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, this bill was heard on June twenty-sixth, it was recommended favorable. There are findings of facts in the desk documents, I move the findings.
Debate or discussion on the findings? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of the findings of facts say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair Dorsey.
I move the bill favorable.
Any debate, discussion, nope, all those in favor of, prom?
Are there amendments in the bill?
Are there amendments?
No, there were findings of facts, but no amendment.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill.
I apologize, this bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty five dash zero zero five four, zoning, W two overlay district amendment.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Mr. President, this bill was surprising, also heard on June twenty-sixth, it was recommended favorable, and I move it as such.
Debate or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill twenty five dash zero zero five seven, sale of property, fifty-four oh one, Mason Lord Drive.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President, this bill was heard on, wait for it, June twenty-sixth. It was recommended favorable, and I move the bill favorable.
Any debate or discussion on this bill? Nope. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. We now move, thank you, Chair Dorsey, we now move to bills on third reader. Madam Clerk, please read the bills and call the roll.
City Council Bill twenty five dash zero zero four two, Retirement Savings Plan Clarifying Amendment, Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty five dash zero zero four four, Employees Retirement System, Board of Trustees, Membership and Qualifications, Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty five dash zero zero four three, Employees Retirement System, Class C, filing period, amendment, Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved. And now, committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Budget and Appropriations, Chair McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a work session on Tuesday, September the ninth, twenty twenty-five, at nine A M. on two five dash zero zero three six, that's going to be Property Taxes, Baltimore City Payment in Lieu of Taxes Task Force within the Clarence Duverns Council Chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair McCray. Education, Youth, and Older Adults, Chair Bullock. No announcements. Housing and Economic Development, Chair Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Economic Development Committee is going to reschedule City Council Bill twenty five zero zero six three, um, which was originally scheduled on July twenty-second at four thirty. Um, in addition to that, Mr. President, we will be prepared to announce a series of oversight hearings at the next council meeting.
Great. Uh, Chairman, did you say when you were rescheduling it to, or?
We're working with, um, planning, with planning as well as posting to ensure that the posting is correct for it.
Got it. Very much appreciated, thank you for that. Labor and Workforce, Chair Jones, no announcements. Land Use and Transportation, Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, August twenty-eighth, here in the City Council Chambers, at ten A M., the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold hearings on the following five bills. Council Bill twenty five zero zero six nine, sale of property, eighteen twenty North Charles Street. Council Bill twenty five zero zero seven zero, sale of property, two four two South Patterson Park Avenue. Council Bill twenty five zero zero seven four, repeal of ordinance zero six dash two two two, planned unit development, eleven hundred Wycomico Street. Council Bill twenty five zero zero seven eight, city streets closing portion of certain streets and alleys bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Payson Street, and the land of National Railroad Passenger Company, Amtrak. Council Bill twenty five zero zero seven nine, sale of property, certain streets lying within the area bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Payson Street, West Lafayette Avenue, and the land of National Railroad Passenger Corporation, Amtrak. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Dorsey. Legislative Investigations, Chair Schleifer. No announcements. Uh, Public Health and the Environment, Chair Porter, as I said, excuse, thank you, sir, and Public Safety, Chair Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will be rescheduling, uh, two of our LOs, uh, LO twenty-five dash zero 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 six and LO twenty-five dash zero 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 five, um, on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, and November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. The Baltimore City Fire Department and Emergency Medical Services Operations, um, and the December ninth meeting, twenty twenty-five, on Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention, will both be rescheduled from twelve P M. to one P M. We are simply pushing back the time one hour for both of those LOs.
Noted. Uh, thank you, Chair Conway. Finally, I have three announcements. On Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, at five thirty P M., the Committee of the Whole will meet to hear LO twenty-five dash zero zero two six, Crisis Response to Review Resources Available to Respond to Individuals Experiencing Behavioral Health Crises in Baltimore City, Assess the Integration and Implementation of Specific Agency Responses to Such Individuals, and Determine Improvements Needed to City Agencies and Partners', Coordination and Response to These Crises. I will just say briefly, uh, this hearing is extremely important to me as the former Chair of the City's Trauma Informed Care Task Force, and as someone who has seen the mental health crisis up close and personal, we know that the City of Baltimore has long been a leader when it comes to behavioral and mental health, and we know that, like any system, uh, without proper maintenance and accountability, systems will atrophy. And so it is extremely important, in light of what we've seen over the past couple of weeks, that we bring parties together to solve this issue. Not to fingerpoint, not to blame any one entity or agency, but to say that this is a team sport, and that we are going to support the mental health and well-being of all residents of this city, no matter where you came from, no matter your financial status, that we owe it to Baltimoreans, that when you dial nine eight eight or nine one one and are experiencing a behavioral or mental health crisis, that we have the proper protocol developed, and we have the proper response that we can deploy. Uh, so I am very much looking forward to that hearing. Uh, additionally, this is a city council that has taken its role of fiscal stewardship extremely, extremely seriously. Um, we owe that to the taxpayers of this city. To that end, I am announcing two important hearings about our city's financial management and performance. On Wednesday, September tenth, at five thirty P M., the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission will convene to review the city's, city auditor's biennial performance audit on the efficiency and effectiveness of the hiring processes at city agencies, the status of the recommendations proposed by the audit, and next steps for agency implementation. On Wednesday, September seventeenth, at five thirty P M., the Committee of the Whole will meet to hear LO twenty-five dash zero zero one six, the Annual Audit Review, for the purpose of reviewing the single and annual audits for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Finally, uh, after this, uh, council meeting, we will reconvene the council, um, the oversight of council services, uh, to confirm the leader of council services. So chairs and other folks, please stick around immediately after this council meeting. Um, it will be quick, but it is extremely important because we want to get our leader permanently confirmed. We now move to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized to make any regular announcements. Tonight's district spotlight comes from Councilmember Jones of the twelfth district. You know where the bar is, Tony Glover said it, you gotta exceed it.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was so long ago, I don't even remember what that presentation was. Um, so, sorry.
Well, I do.
Sorry if I don't remember, I just know we have two minutes in order to highlight something really special in our district. I think, is there, you have the slide, or, yes. So, and I want to take this moment, I could think of no better way than to, um, honor someone we recently lost in our arts community, um, Mr. David Herman. Um, he was an extraordinary, a multimedia visual artist, uh, and a musician, who was the owner and operator of Gray Matterspace. Uh, David brought art, music, and life to the Green Mount West neighborhood, which is in District Twelve for over twenty years. Um, he was extremely supportive of local artists and their projects in the community, and, uh, he tragically passed away on July fourth, uh, twenty twenty-five, at the young age of fifty-eight. In twenty twenty, uh, David began a four-year journey into abstract art expressionism, uh, building on his passion for impressionist landscapes and post-World War Two action paintings. Um, his work captured raw emotional power and dynamic self-expression. And, uh, in March twenty twenty-five, David, uh, debuted his exhibit, Memories of Illusion. You can go to the next slide. His gallery, his gallery space was open to everyone, um, and he was one of the hosts of Stoop Night, a self-guided tours, uh, a self-guided tour of artists, culture, and station north across Charles North, the Green Mount West, and the Barclay neighborhood. Uh, in fact, I've met him at the Stoop Night in April. Uh, and since then, I ran into him throughout many community events in District Twelve. Um, in fact, he was really active in the community, he cared a lot about the community and always talked to me about how he wanted to use his talent of art to better Baltimore City and the children of the Baltimore who were less fortunate. Uh, in the slide, I have a few of his paintings we can take a look at. That's one of my favorite paintings of his, uh, Flying, Flying South, uh, next slide, a few of them, next slide. And most of these paintings are oil paintings, he liked to dabble in oil, next slide. Next slide, one more. All right. Uh, Baltimore City has suffered a great loss in its passing, um, but I invite you all to join us at a celebration of life hosted by his friends and, and, in the Baltimore arts community on August tenth, from four P M. to seven P M. at Area Forty-five. We ask you to please register on Eventbrite if you plan on attending. Um, speaking to his family, his family is deeply appreciative of everything his friends and fellow Baltimoreans are doing for David, especially as they do not live in the city right now. And, uh, but, uh, an obituary will be posted, will be published in the Baltimore Sun tomorrow. Uh, I will say, he was tragically, unexpectedly taken away from us, um, but we honor him, we appreciate the work he's done to make the Baltimore cultural arts seem what it is, and, uh, didn't want to think of any other way I could do but recognize him in this spotlight, and, uh, say thank you, Dave and his family for all the work you've done. Keep awesome.
Thank you, Councilman Jones, for both lifting up the arts as well as, uh, a great Baltimorean in David Herman. Uh, the reality is that our city is filled with amazing bright lights, just like Mr. Herman, so thank you for keeping his memory alive in this chamber. Appreciate you, and thanks for doing the spotlight. Other regular announcements? Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to invite the city and everyone over to, on August ninth, from ten to three P M., we are having the annual Summers in the Seventh. Last year, we serviced fourteen hundred families with book bags, health screenings, as well as live music and entertainment. This year, we, we're gonna go up to two thousand. The goal is every year to increase it. When I first came in office in two thousand, we started at three hundred families, we're now going to do two, ah, three hundred families, now we're going to do two thousand. I want everybody to come over, enjoy some Tia's, uh, Italian ice, free food, and then also get checked out for any of the major health, health and diseases that impact the Black and Brown community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. Uh, other regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none, uh, Councilman Bullock, apologies.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, uh, Councilman Torrance, for another reminder. So I also want to invite folks to come out to the Ninth District on August, uh, second and third, that is Saturday and Sunday, for the annual, uh, Ruth Kirk Festival. Some of you are familiar with, uh, the late, uh, Delegate Ruth Kirk, who served West Baltimore for decades, and her son and her, and, uh, her daughter have also carried on the tradition. So it's a great event, um, it's at Franklin Square Park, so please come out and join us. Thank you.
Appreciate you, thanks for lifting that up. Uh, Delegate Kirk and Squeaky and the whole family, I know, appreciates folks coming out. Anybody else, regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none, once again, just a reminder for the folks who are part of the Oversight Committee for Council Services, please stick around immediately after this meeting. That being said, the next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, August eighteenth, at five P M. There being no further business, this concludes the twelfth meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council.